Okay. I guess first we'll do the, let me see what I have here. Let me bring this to order. First, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Hi, everyone. Okay. Can we have a roll call? Claire? Thanks.
Bonavich? Manny? Monte?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Field? Duffy? Now? Councilwoman Kaplan?
Here.
Pollutis?
Here.
Vice Chair Zecilia?
Here.
Here. Good? Okay. Alright. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the Ocean in the office of the Township Clerk. There's an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the right of the room. No smoking. No new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony taken after 11:00 PM. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off, or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. Okay. We had a minor site plan subcommittee application, and I think, I'm gonna read this, but then I'm gonna recuse myself from this, okay? Hollywood Golf Club, Block 40, Lot 1234-82, 83, 84, 88, 101, 510, Rose El Ave, Ocean, 07712, Zone R1. Attorney Ms. Krimko, applicants seek approval from the minor subplaning committing to demolition approximately 800 square feet of area from the existing clubhouse and they struck new one-story addition totaling 3,686 square feet to the clubhouse. Mr. De Figli, would you like to talk through this?
Sure. The Minor Site Plan Subcommittee reviewed this application and is unanimously recommending to the Board to approve it. So, I would ask for a motion to accept and approve this Minor Site Plan application.
I'll second.
Well.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Moved by Mr. Pollutis, seconded by Mr. Monte. Roll call vote, please, Claire.
Monte?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kaplan?
Yes.
Pollutis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zecilia?
Yes.
I'm gonna recuse myself. Okay. There's a correspondence on 720 Corleas Avenue, Block 7. Do I need to look at this or make a motion about this?
I think it's just for...
Just information that we received this?
It's just for, yeah.
Okay, we received this letter around an application for flood hazard area verification. Okay, can I get approval of minutes for August 26, 2024 and September 23, 2024? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I made the motion.
That can be in all favor for the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, we have our continued case of 3200 Sunset Commons LLC, Block 137, Lot 23, 3200 Sunset Avenue, Ocean 07712, Zone C3. Just for this case, Mr. Pollutis did listen to the last hearing and has certified that in writing that he is up to date on all the discussions, so Mr. Pollutis can vote on this as well.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I believe the only issue that we did not finish at the last meeting were there were concerns about the traffic along Logan.
Correct, right.
And I think that's really the sole reason we're here tonight.
Yes, correct. I think that was the only thing we were not comfortable, I think we settled all other matters, right?
Correct.
Yep. Yep.
Ooh, excuse me.
Watch yourself.
I'm trying to break my other arm.
A little equilibrium problem there?
Yeah, no, it's a whole story, Jeff. For the record, Jennifer Krimko from Law Firm of Van Sylgrim and Aaron, on behalf of the applicant, we did not present a planning testimony for the minor variances. I'll defer to the Board whether or not that's necessary. The variances, though, however, had nothing to do with the access. At the Board meeting, we had proposed alternative access to Logan Road, and one of the Board members, I think Board Member Duffy, had suggested limiting it to write-in, write-out only on Logan Road in an effort to avoid any issues from the objecting neighbors who lived across the street. Ben had indicated in his mind, well, it can't hurt, but he's not a traffic engineer. So, we hired a traffic engineer to examine a couple of things. First, to examine the existing roadways, the traffic patterns on the existing roadways, whether or not adding traffic onto Logan Road is appropriate or whether or not it would become a problem. And again, and I don't remember, I think Mark brought it up. I mean, it's a permitted use, we're entitled to the access, but because the neighbors were concerned, we wanted to give the Board that comfort. And also to look at accident reports to see what's going on there. So, Justin Taylor did prepare a traffic state, traffic impact study. It was submitted to the Board. I'd like to move that in as a seven. And I will just, I will just say at the outset that Ben did review the report and took no exception to it in his review letter. He did put in his letter, he made the suggestion with regard to restricting the Sunset Avenue driveway. And we did have an opportunity to speak with our expert, and we spoke with Ben, and we're not opposed to a partial restriction, but as you're going to hear, a full restriction will, one, cause confusion for cars that travel in Sunset looking to come to our site, and, two, more importantly, will push all traffic onto Logan, which, as you know, is not what the neighbors wanted. So, as we go through the testimony, just so the Board can keep in the back of their minds, what we would agree to is a no-left turnout onto Sunset Avenue during the peak hour, which is from 4:00 to 7:00, which is the reason why we want this alternative exit in the first place. So, I would just use that as the framework to introduce Justin, have him sworn and qualified, and then go through what his findings are.
And just to clarify one thing, I didn't say that the Board couldn't restrict you from going out onto the road. In fact, what I think what I said was, it's a permitted use, we can't take off-site traffic into consideration, but that doesn't mean that you're automatically, that you're allowed access onto the area.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
I certainly didn't mean to represent it any other way. What I was, what I was suggesting was, we weren't responsible to show that the roads can accommodate it, but because we're asking for this access on this lesser roadway, which we believe we're entitled to, we wanted to bring a traffic engineer, just really to speak about restricting that Logan Road, and more importantly, to give you guys the comfort that Logan Road has the capacity and it will not cause a problem for the neighbors across the street.
Okay, and we agree that that's where we were, okay. So, Stan, do you swear that any testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y god?
I do.
And just state your names for the record?
Justin Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R.
And you are a licensed engineer state of New Jersey specializing in traffic?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay. So, Justin, you had the opportunity to do traffic counts, and you prepared a report which we moved in as a seven, so while I'm sure the Board member's ready, could you just summarize your findings and your recommendations?
Sure. So, after hearing the concerns of the Board at the last hearing, I was commissioned to take a look at both the existing conditions along both Sunset Avenue and Logan Road, as well as the potential impact of creating a driveway out to Logan Road. By way of background, what we did was we went out and we conducted traffic counts to figure out the baseline volumes which are going on out there today. We typically, in the traffic engineering world, look during the AM and the PM peak hours because that tends to be the highest volume of traffic on these type of roadways. So, we looked from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and from 4:30 to 6:30 PM.
And just in, that's generally also the peak hours for medical office buildings, so they did coincide.
That is correct. We also consulted with the applicant to find out the busiest day that they have on their site when all the doctors are there, and it turns out Thursday afternoons or Thursdays are their busiest days. So, we went out and made sure that we were collecting data during the busiest time of that existing use. We then also analyzed the driveway of their site. We wanted to know who was coming to and from the site, and realistically, where are they going? Where they're trying to get to, whether they're back to 35, whether they're heading east on Sunset, up and down Logan. Because we really wanted to have a good picture of what the impact and the rerouting of traffic would be from that Sunset driveway to that Logan Road driveway. So, we collected the data at those two locations. We then routed it out to the Logan Road driveway. Of course, now, not all the traffic is going to reroute. Initially, when we were looking at it, we hadn't contemplated turning restrictions at Sunset Avenue, but rather, what was more convenient, what was easier for people to get out? And do you really want to wait for a gap in the eastbound traffic that's stuck at the traffic light? Or do you want to come out, make an easier left onto Logan Road and utilize the traffic signal that's there to make the left to head back to Route 35?
And Justin, when you did your studies, you found that during the peak hours, there was a queue from the traffic light that went past our driveway?
Yes, on, heading eastbound on Sunset, it routinely would back up from the signal past the driveway of the proposed development.
So, there was testimony to that effect and the difficulty, but...
Eastbound, eastbound on Sunset?
Eastbound on Sunset, that's correct, so...
When that light was on, then backed up?
And it backed up potentially, you know, past the driveway, past into the Garden Center. And so, what that means is, as you are making a left out of Sunset?
Chairman, can we just announce that the newest arrival?
Yeah. Jack, maybe you can say here, our newest arrival. Right, um, Jack?
He's joining the meeting at 7:00.
And Jack, you were here the last meeting for this as well?
He just signed the certification.
We just signed that, okay, so Jack signed his confirmation that you have watched the video of the last meeting, correct? Okay, great.
And just, Jack, by way, very brief summary, we moved the traffic impact study in. We've introduced the traffic engineer, and he just explained that he counted the traffic both on both roadways, the intersection, as well as in and out of our driveway, and he's just talking about his findings, just to catch up.
Perfect.
Great.
So, where I was, essentially, we wanted to take a look at the traffic that was currently entering and exiting the site, and then who would reroute to this new driveway. As I mentioned, the left turnout onto Sunset is a major component of this because the queues coming on northbound Logan do not back up past the driveway. So, you have that, while you have to wait potentially for people going north-south, you're not waiting for that queue to clear to be able to get out. So, that was the major move when we anticipated, but you also had people that are traveling north on Logan Road, turning left on a Sunset and turning left into the site currently today, just from where they live or if they find it more convenient on 35 northbound to come up Logan Road. Because we counted with cameras, we were able to track these vehicles to figure out where they were coming from, where they're going to. So, then we rerouted them to the Logan Road driveway. And in order to ensure that there is sufficient capacity in that driveway, we ran capacity analyses utilizing the existing volume on Logan Road and then this rerouted traffic. And what we find is that new driveway is going to operate with levels of service B or better during both of those peak community hours. There is capacity in Logan Road to accommodate this additional traffic. Now, I would note that the volumes we're talking about are not really all that high. We're talking about 18 cars, maybe, maybe 15 cars during the peak hour, but it's...
So, it's not necessarily 18 cars at once, it's 18 cars over the course of an hour?
Over the whole hour, that's correct.
You're saying 18 cars went along Logan Road?
No, 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 in and out of our driveway.
Oh, in and out of the driveway, okay.
Right, so these are the volumes that we anticipate. There's about, in the mornings, about 35 cars coming into the site. We anticipate about eight of them would reroute to this new driveway.
Okay.
Right, same thing, so we anticipate eight in and 10 out in the morning peak hour, and three in and eight out in the evening peak hour. That would then be onto Logan Road that weren't, some of them were already there, but really wouldn't be making that left or the right out of Logan Road.
And based on those volumes, would that have any impact on either the queue at the light or any impact on the traffic level on Logan Road? Meaning, you said the driveway would continue to operate at B, would it change the level of service at that intersection on Logan Road?
No, that was the other piece that we analyzed, was the operation of the signal of Sunset and Logan Road, just to determine the type of impact it would have, and none of the levels of service changed. None of the delays even changed, really, because we're talking about a car every, I don't know, 10 minutes, right?
And of the accidents you analyzed as it related to this site, there were no accidents on Logan Road, but there were three accidents involved left-ins or left-outs on our property.
So, we had the conversation earlier, I actually went back and dug through the crash records that we obtained. We got crash records from the police department from January of 2021 all the way through August of 2024, right? The longest extent that we can look at to identify if there were any type of crash history that would be concerning either along Logan Road or also the driveway. There were two crashes associated with vehicles exiting the driveway, one left and one right. The other one we were talking about earlier actually had nothing to do, even though it was westbound on Sunset, it was actually somebody, it was the queue coming back from 35, and somebody rear-ended somebody else, had nothing to do with the operation of the driveway.
So, in your opinion, if we were to provide this other driveway and require cars to use it for a left-out during the peak afternoon hour, in your opinion, would that create a safer situation both for Sunset Avenue and for the site and not cause any detrimental impact to the Logan Road traffic?
Absolutely. I mean, I think it provides that pressure relief valve, so you don't need to have a, trying to make a left out through the queue and then peek your way looking at westbound Sunset. And based on the analysis that we've done, there's no impact, no negative impact to Logan Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Justin?
Yeah, before I go to, to you, sir, Ben, did you have a comment, did you want to make a bit about any of this?
Yeah, so, I agree with the testimony. I review the report, and I had my traffic engineer review the report, and we generated our review comments for this. So, the, I'm fine with the condition of restricting left turns out of the site onto Sunset during the afternoon peak. And what did you say that was?
Four to seven.
Four to seven, yep.
I'm, I'm fine with that. And then, I just want to get a little, little more clarification on, I know it's in the report, but I think for the, for the Board's benefit, there was some concern, I think by some Board members, that there would be traffic backed up on Logan Road that would, I guess, restrict people from coming out of the new driveway. Can you explain the queue length there at the light that's going northbound on Logan?
And while he's looking for that, Mr. Chair? We would, if the Board would approve this, we would grant Title 39, which is, you know, gives the police the ability to ticket people who are making left turns out during the hours that they're not supposed to.
Okay.
So, it's a great question, Ben, thank you for, I should have probably touched on this in the direct. We did analyze the queues, we observed the queues, we also used the traffic analysis software to come up with what we determined, the 95th percentile queue length. Now, that's approximately 185 feet from the stop bar to where this new driver would be along Logan Road, and the calculated 95th percentile queues with the addition of the traffic that we are proposing to relocate was 178 feet, so just shy of where that driveway is. So, what that shows is, the 95th percentile, where it happens 5% during that busiest peak hour, is just to the edge of where the driveway is. On average, what it is about 65 feet. So, most of the day, the average queue is way, is much closer to the intersection, so there would be no, no impediments to coming out of the driveway.
How, at the 95th percentile, how far is the queue on Sunset Avenue? And when does it potentially clear from our driveway?
So, Sunset Avenue to the driveway is 140 feet, so it's actually closer to the signal. The 95th percentile queues we see are 215 or 357 feet in the evening, right? So, way beyond where that actual driveway is.
So, it could take a few light cycles to get those gaps?
Even the average queues extend, we have 158 feet where it's 100, to the through, right, so...
So, it's not extraordinary situation, it's almost always blocked during the peak hour?
That's correct.
So, basically, for both, during those peak hours, what you're saying is four to seven?
Yes.
Four to seven, that both of those lanes are pretty saturated?
The eastbound approach coming on Sunset Avenue, yes.
And the Logan Road one also going?
So, Logan Road on average, it's not, right? So, Logan Road, what we saw during the build condition, the average is about 50 or 60 feet. So, 95...
Even during the peak time?
Yep. 95th percentile, we're seeing 100, maximum 178.
So, worst-case scenario, at a 5% of the time during that, it'll be that way, but on average, it's not?
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Did you want to?
No, that was the, the main concern that I had, was, was making sure that was, that was clear. Yeah, I didn't have any other issues with it.
Okay. So, just from a Board standpoint, would anybody like to ask some questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
How are we notifying drivers that they can't make a left turn on Sunset?
We're gonna have...
Between 4:00 and 7:00?
We'll put signage up on the site and indicate it'll be enforced.
So, a sign like a, like a, like a no left turn?
They're gonna say no left turn for Sunset.
And it'll say with the time, time zone there?
Yep.
Just like you see, I think there's a similar sign going into the golf course. I think there's limita, there's a few other sites where there's some limitations like that.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have?
Would you consider 3:00 to 7:00? And the reason why I ask that is because, you know, that's when all the bus traffic, and I heard during the testimony, you know, last time, that's where it seems to be a lot of the backups, around that 3 o'clock time, you know, the schools get out, Ocean Township's schools get out at 2:45, and they start hitting the Wanamass area around 3 o'clock, and then it's a continuous loop until about 4 o'clock or so.
What did you find by way of the queues and the issues at 3:00 versus 4:00?
So, what we saw is, if the peak time of the eastbound Sunset was 5:00 to 6:00, as we went to either side, it dropped by about 10 to 15%. When you got down to about that 3 o'clock hour, you were about 30% lower than what the peak that we saw at 5 o'clock was. So, in my opinion, it wasn't wholeheartedly necessary to limit it at that point because we, because the eastbound traffic has dropped significantly, 30%, I didn't think it was absolutely necessary to limit it at that point.
With the westbound coming off of Sunset, you know, crossing Logan and going from Logan, there's been, I mean, it backs up to, you know, David Rouge Park that way, too, so... I live around the, that's why, you know, experienced it, you know, trying to get across 35 at that time. You know, you always see that, exactly what's happening, someone's trying to make that right turn out.
Right, but we're not, so, that, and I understand what Mr. Pollutis is saying, we're not affecting the cars heading off on Logan Road to make the right turn onto Sunset because we're coming from the other way.
But it is, if you're, I mean, it's...
Well, if you're making a left out of the site, on Sunset.
I'm sorry, I said, I said right, you're right, a left out of it.
And then a left on the Sunset.
And then you're trying to make a right onto Sunset from Logan Road. It does cause that, right in that intersection there. And it's usually around, like I said, it does taper off, and it's...
So, again, we counted the queues during that time. My expert is saying it's not necessary, he would like to, we, we understood the Board had concerns, we hired the traffic engineer for the purpose of having an expert offer that testimony. We're offering the 4:00 to 7:00 based on the timeframe when it is the worst. Based on his testimony, it's not necessary from an expert standpoint.
Was the test all day? I thought I heard you say between 4:30 and 7:30 earlier?
So, what, what we did was, we specifically counted the turning movements from 4:30 to 6:30 and 7:00 to 9:00, but what we did was take a look at a 24-hour span of when the traffic spiked and then dropped to make sure that we were also encompassing those highest hours. So, when we looked at the movements on Sunset, that's when that spike was, that 5:00 PM, and then dropping about 15, 20% every hour and an hour on the outside of that.
So, you counted cars in and out of our site from 4:00 to 7:00, but you looked at the roadway movements 24 hours?
That's correct.
How many days did that span?
The, the turning movement counts were done on one Thursday in September. The 24-hour period, we actually used metadata produced by SMATs, and it was actually monthly over the entire year.
So, it included summer traffic?
That, well, to dive a little further in, counting in September, I know we were lower than what you would see in the summer, so we wanted to be able to encompass that, so we used the monthly variations to increase the traffic. It was actually went up by about 36% from what we counted to the peak summer. So, all that analysis, all those levels of service that I quoted to you were all based on that inflated summertime counts. When we looked at the 24-hour daily variation, that took basically the entire year and looked at the 24-peak hour variation.
And just to clarify, because I've heard this testimony before and I know how that works, I just want to make sure that we're explaining it in, in late terms. You essentially looked at the traffic throughout the year, and you analyzed how much more traffic was on these roadways in the heat of summer and heat, pun not intended, at the height of summer versus September, and you found a 36% increase in traffic on those roads during those peak hours.
That is correct.
So, just, let me, and so the numbers that you used are not based on the numbers you actually found out on the roads in September? It's based on the numbers you found out on the road in September plus 36%?
Yes, that's correct.
So, you basically looked at it, worst-case scenario, peak of summer?
That's correct.
Okay. Just, just to take Mike's comment here, does anybody else want to talk about Mike's comment about moving it to 3 o'clock? Does anybody? I mean, to me, I mean, just my opinion here, based on what these experts saying, it doesn't sound warranted to move it to, from 4:00 to 3:00, just my... But if anybody else has a comment about it? No? Okay.
If, if I can just add that I don't have an issue with, with what the applicant is offering, 4:00 to 7:00. I think that does, based on the data, does encompass the, the peak that, that they're talking about.
Great, okay. Does anybody else have any questions or for this person?
Well, curious to see that if there's a sign exiting Bimble or onto Wicca Peko to see what that timeframe is. It's probably three-quarters of a mile from the subject location, and I'm thinking that is 4:30 to 7:30, but I could be wrong, maybe we could check and see.
I certainly can't check tonight, and, and I don't, I, my intention is to wrap up tonight. And again, when that sign went in, I don't know what factors they relied on for that. It may have been based on when they're busiest, as opposed to when the roadways are busiest. I don't know if there was a traffic study or not, so I'd respectfully just suggest that we rely on the expert.
Yeah, I also think we want to take into account that the, that we're asking this group to work with us on this, right? And, you know, we are taking into account that it's a, you know, a medical office building that has different restrictions than any, than another road possibly, right? And also, I'm going a little bit by Ben, Ben's analysis here as well.
I guess that's what day, on September, that was, your traffic, you did the traffic study?
The day? It was September 19th, which was a Thursday.
Okay, so, does anybody else have any questions for this individual? No? No? Anybody from the public like to make a comment or, and talk, and ask a question about this? Would you like to step up and, and be heard? I think you'd have, I think you have to come up here, miss.
And, Mr. Chair, is it just questions of this witness, comments would be at the end?
Yes, this is just questions, right.
Okay.
You might as well just open it up and, and...
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's easier because I think they're gonna say the same thing.
Okay, great, questions and comments.
I'm not underst, so, I live...
Ma'am, I'm just gonna have to get your name again for the record?
Nancy Weary, W-H-E-A-R-Y.
Right, alright, you were sworn at the last hearing, you're still on the road.
Okay, I'm trying to understand, so, about the Logan Road driveway, what you're saying, because right now, at the hours of 4:00 to 7:00, the traffic backs up, back toward 35, you know, the cut-through. So, I, I just, I just don't understand the numbers that you, that... It's gonna take us forever to get out of our driveway, I guess, is what I'm saying. And a lot of times, we do wait through a couple lights in our driveway to get onto Logan Road to go either, you know, up Sunset, down, wherever we're going. And you have the traffic coming in from 35 up by the car dealership. So, that always backs up, that's, you know...
Can he answer that?
I would like to, because I, I'm not quite understanding what you're saying, you're gonna do.
You know, he did say that there is actually a backup of 170 feet.
Right.
So...
And it's probably more than that.
But we counted it.
Okay, because the light, the traffic light appears to be pretty close to where you want to put that driveway.
No, so, Mrs. Weary, I don't know if you're the testimony, the driveway, was it just in approximately 185 feet from the light?
Yes, that's correct.
Our driveway's approximately 185 feet from the light, and at the worst case, it was projected out at 170 feet.
Okay.
So, it, the backup does not go to our driveway. It stops 15 feet short. It stops fifteen feet short of our driveway, or I'm doing the math wrong, maybe ten.
So when they come out of onto, they can only make the right or only make the left?
They can go either right or left coming out of the driveway. So that you can turn north onto Logan Road or south on the Logan Road. And the analysis that we did shows that, given the level of traffic that we have on Logan Road currently. And the rerouted volumes that were operating with levels of service.
Well, speak in English for me. When you say the rerouted volumes, how many cars are you talking about would be making the left out of our site? Towards the light, towards Mrs. Weary's property? I think that's your question, right? How many cars are we adding coming that way?
Right, because. We can't get out now, we can't get out any of those homes.
We project nine in the morning and eight in the evening.
Over a period of?
Over a period of one hour.
Right.
Right, so that's a car every six minutes.
That has to work their way into the flow of existing traffic on Logan Road going out to Sunset or wherever.
That's correct, yep. And that's the analysis that we performed showing the levels of service.
Okay. Well, I. I'm against it, that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the husband, I'm Gary Weary.
Thank you, and sir, you're still under oath from last meeting also.
I mean, again, we experience the traffic. There's a lot of traffic down there, I don't care what the study says. That is a low, that is a very narrow road. You have people that park on either side of those things, cause people have more than two cars. And there are cars on that thing, and you better not drive fast down that road or you're gonna hit somebody. When somebody's coming this way and you're coming this way and yours park cars, you better stop. And you have to be very careful or you're gonna hit everybody. And there's traffic there, and when we get traffic from the from Logan Road, we get it off the highway, there's also the uh. We get it from the uh. When there's ever a concert in Asbury Park, you get it from Logan, there's a lot of road, I mean, I don't, this room is bigger than the road that we have on. You take that thing, the two uh, the desk, that's probably the size of the road. Putting down a couple cars on each front of these houses, and each one of these houses, I guarantee, has two or three cars on there. And you cannot drive down that car, drive down that thing at regular speed, you have to slow down. And there are times that I have to physically stop and let somebody go right by me. Because you're gonna go this close, and that's just with regular traffic. And now you're gonna, and and the fact that you could put up a sign all you want. We have signs there now. We had a sign there now that said you couldn't park at a certain spot of the thing, and people do it. And we've gone out and told people, don't park there because number one, you'll get a ticket, and number two, you're gonna get hit. My car, as I said the last time, got hit. I had to park on the street one night.
So Mr. Weary, let me ask you a question. What 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 is your suggestion? Is your suggestion that no cars go out of the Logan and everything go out?
Don't do it at all, just come down thirty-five.
So everything should go down Sunset, onto Sunset?
Yes, go down thirty-five then. If they wanna go to the office, well, they can go down thirty-five, make the turn, and go in, there's already a path to go in there. I mean, this is a neighborhood, this is a neighborhood block. You don't need it. I mean, I'm not even gonna go under the thing that you yeah, you need uh. They have the variance, they can add fifteen more cars, that's their right, they can do whatever they want. They could put a hundred cars in there if they wanna put in there, just don't do it down my driveway. Do go down thirty-five, make them turn at the light. At the Sunoco Station, they go in, they go right into that exit, they go right into that entrance, and they go out that way, that way. And that's it. I mean, you don't need this thing. It's a lot of traffic and I've I've lived there for twenty years. And there's always an accident there, there's always accidents, there's always problems there. And until you put that light on there, there was an accident there every other every other minute, cause people would just go through the.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying to be, it's just, it's frustrating, we see it.
I I appreciate what you're saying. I think, first of all, there was a couple of things that came to light, the number of accidents that there occur in in a two and a half year period, right? Which was all, which is. The other is that I believe that I bu- you know, they're trying to make their building more efficient. For also all the people that visit their building, right, if all the people come in and out, right? So and they have, I believe, some legitimately stake to be able to do that.
I'm not saying they don't have a right to do what they want with their business.
I think it's, I think it's unfortunate that the road, that Logan Road was built as narrow as it was, right? I don't know if that's in my purview to hinder the applicant from what they're trying to do. So I can't solve that, I can't solve the problem on the fact that the road is very narrow.
Well, I liked them to be maybe good neighbors. I mean, again, they're part of that neighborhood, we try to be good neighbors, and I mean, it's not the. I had an issue unrelated to this, but they were cutting down the trees one night, and they cut out my power. On my uh, they hit my line.
Okay.
And then, of course, I tried to tell them, and then, of course, they wanted to deny it. And I finally, they finally fixed it. So again, I'm trying to be a good neighbor with them, they're trying to be good neighbors with us, and the thing is too, before they even put the sign up there, that you couldn't park in their parking lot. People used to park in there all the time, because there was no parking on the street. If you came down Logan Road, if you were having a house party, you would tell your guests, park in that parking lot.
I I un- I understand what you're saying, so just just to, just to appreciate.
Right.
Our position.
I understand, look.
Is that, is that, you know, if it if it meets, if it meets the use case of the what's allowable? Right, and they, and we also find that people are actually trying to make some kind of um. Consideration for what we're asking for, right? And we wanna take advantage of that, as opposed to all of a sudden, the it's um. We're not, we're not, we don't have that opportunity, right, so uh um I'm not.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah, sure, you can talk.
So the other problem is the only variances that we need with regard to the driveway are, one, that we have two instead of one. And two, the location of the curb cut. And we can solve those variances, but it would be in a way. That I think would upset the Wearys even more would be if we closed Sunset Avenue altogether, because. A- again, which I'm not suggesting we're gonna do, but the town has an ordinance that they want the drivers on the lesser roadways. And there's no question that Logan Road is a lesser roadway as it relates to traffic. So to avoid those variances, we would put the Lo- only a Logan Road driveway. And put it on the center of the lot, which would bring it closer to the Wearys. So the only variances we need with regard to this are really helping what the concern is and and while. I I understand and I'm and I'm empathetic to what the Wearys are going through, at the same time. We're a citizen, well, not a residential citizen, a corporate citizen of Ocean Township. And we're looking to uh avail ourselves of of all of the same rights and.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying all that, and and I'm I'm, we're empathetic, yeah, yeah.
Jennifer got confused because there are two standards in the ordinance. For a residential zone, the driveway has to be on the street of lesser classification. And a commercial zone has to be on the street of higher classification. So actually, the Sunset would be the one that's the correct one. However, the one thing that nobody has brought up, and I'm I'm a very lazy driver. I always look for the path of least resistance and what's gonna get me to where I can go the quickest. If I'm coming out of that site as it exists now during the rush hour and I can't make a left-hand turn. I'm gonna make a right-hand turn on the Sunset, go down to Turner, take Turner down to Appleby, Appleby to Logan, and come back up Logan. And accomplish basically the same thing that's gonna be accomplished by this proposed driveway. That's gonna, there's gonna be traffic coming onto Logan. I think some of the traffic on Logan. Right now is that's what's happening, and it's also putting more traffic onto Turner and Appleby because of that.
So you're so.
It's a very, it's a very simple move to to turn out of that driveway on Sunset. Go east on Sunset to Turner, make a right on the Turner, go down to Appleby, a right on Appleby, and then a, and then a right up Logan.
So Jimmy, you're suggesting that what we're proposing is a good thing?
Yeah, yeah, but you're proposing.
Yeah, that's what I, it was hard to tell, it was hard to tell, yeah.
Much different than what exists now, except you don't have the Turner.
Right, you're proposing that it uncomplicates a lot of things and, right, okay. Well, thanks for that comment, even though I didn't call on you, but thanks. Um Ben, after listening to this, do you have anything you wanna say?
I I agree with what Jim said and kinda uh to piggyback on that. One of the the things that was brought up last time was restricting uh turns out of the driveway on Logan Road to right out only.
Yeah.
And it would be the exact same thing in reverse.
Yeah.
Cars would turn onto Logan, then left onto Appleby, and then downturn.
Yeah, be a, it would, nothing would be solved, right, right, right. I looked at that when we were before this went. Um, okay, uh anybody else from the um um from the audience like to make a comment or ask a question?
Niece's Own Air, I spoke last time as well.
Yes, and you're still under oath, yes.
Z like Zebra, A U N E R E.
Thank you.
Um so I just, you know, wanted to revisit the comment I made last time is, which if you look at that dental office that's right on the other side of the highway. That has a very short distance as well to go out to make the left onto thirty-five North, which is the way a lot of people are traveling. There is a sign that clearly says, don't block the intersection, and that seems to solve their issue without having to have an extra entrance. Yes, there's two entrances, but it's a southbound only. So anybody who's trying to make a left to go up thirty-five North, there's a sign that clearly says, don't block the driveway. And that's sufficient to serve their needs for serving their population. Um the other comment is.
You're talking about the, you're talking about the um dentist on the on the other side?
Yeah, there's a sign that says, don't block the entrance.
Other side of Sunset.
Yes, exactly. And it's a shorter distance from that exit to the light than from Sunset to the light, so. It serves the purpose on that office building. I don't understand why it can't serve the purpose on the Sunset building. Um the second point is that what's gonna stop people from cutting through? Traffic's backed up, trying to go into Asbury, they're all gonna just keep cutting through the parking lot, so what's gonna help stop? Then overflow traffic that's gonna cut, use that as a cut through to get through past the lights. Which, right, I'm just saying, so it's not necessarily eight cars, it could be substantially more that are using that to cut through.
So I just wanna remind the board.
Cars was to make the left turn towards the other way away from Asbury.
I just wanna remind the board again, this is a permitted use.
Yes, correct.
You you can't, all this off out, excuse me, off-site traffic isn't really relevant to the application. You're limited, you're very much limited to the site plan issues and whether it makes sense from a site plan perspective to allow cars to exit out on the Logan. It isn't a question of the number of vehicles that are going up and down Logan and going down Sunset.
Yeah, no, I I I I understand, I think we understand, I I I think that, I think sometimes.
But understood from his comment that actually Lo- Sunset is the appropriate exit then, based on the comment of the commercial zoning, so. I mean, yes, understood, but then that's, that would indicate that's the proper driveway, and there's ways to solve for that exit issue.
Yeah, of the two driveways.
Did you say that?
So I mean, so there's other ways to solve that, like signage and making sure that people are respectful to leave access in and out.
Zonier, I think that the testimony also was though, it's not waiting for the space necessarily to. Only to get through the queue that's waiting to go eastbound. It was also waiting for that and then being able to hop over and make the left.
Understood.
So not blocking the driveway doesn't help.
Well, but that's the same purpose as Aspen. Aspen is trying to make the left.
The light there is significantly longer because it's a highway. So the gap in between when the cars are coming, and it's also a, it's also a dedicated left turn on the other way, so it's a much different.
Sunset, though, that's a dedicated left turn lane, and yes, there's no turning light, but there is a lot more traffic coming from the industrial areas across. I I mean, I.
I understand, but I I mean, you live there, my office is there, I think we can both agree that that driveway is almost always blocked.
So I'm gonna correct what I just said, I mean, I faced upon the fact that it is a variance. You do have to find that the benefits of allowing the local, the Logan exit outweigh the detriment, excuse me, outweigh the detriments of allowing the exit onto Logan. So that is something you do have to uh put into perspective.
Right, which is why we conceded and.
Yes, I understand, yeah.
To give you all the testimony.
And you gentlemen think it does, the benefits outweigh the negatives? Is that a, is that a fair?
Yeah, I think it's a better solution to what currently exists in that.
Yeah.
And and I know that, you said the same thing.
And obviously for the people who run the building. And obviously for the people who run the bill, uh obviously.
Their, their opinion doesn't matter.
No, I'm talking for, yeah, that it helps.
No, we have to show that it's a benefit to the traffic overall.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um anybody have any? Okay, so is anybody else in the in the in the audience like to make a comment or come up and make a statement? Or have a question? No? Okay, before, so I'm gonna end that part of our discussion. I wanna bring it back up to you, does anybody else have any questions or any discussion you wanna have up here about this? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have a planner, but it's only really to discuss those two variances. That, I mean, the landscaped area is not really changing. Uh we're adding a lot of landscaping. It's the curb cut location and the number of curb cuts, the parking isn't changing, and the parking space width isn't changing.
Yeah, I don't, I personally don't think it's necessary, being you have Jim testifying as a planner that he feels a better plan.
I wanna give you that option.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm not sure what everybody feels right now, so I think we, I think we could kinda, uh, can I get a motion from somebody, either on the affirmative or the negative? Right now about this uh.
I don't, I don't know what you're asking, I'm sorry.
I want somebody to make a motion here.
Either approve or deny now.
They're either approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You make a motion to approve? Can I get a second?
A second.
You got a second? Okay, so um well, we have a, on the table right now is a motion to approve the applicant. This is a positive resolution, correct? I did, I did close the comment section, yes. Yes, I seconded, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Julia?
Yes. I think you forgot.
Forgot me.
Yeah, I I seconded and and yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you everybody for your comments.
Chair, I think you asked me for this, I printed it for you.
Okay, we have a, we have a new uh, we have a new case, um Maureen Cliff, trustee block uh five. Five dot O two, uh lot twenty-seven, four six five, West Park Avenue, occurs O seven seven five, zone R four. Um the applicant seeks a minor subdivision to subdivide the existing single-family residential lot. Into uh two single-family residential lots.
I know I don't look like Rick.
Uh not at all. Actually, I don't know what Rick looks like, so. I have no idea what Rick looks like, I don't think, I might, I might.
Well, note that Mr. Ms. Samot has stepped down.
And thank you for the record, Jennifer Krimko, Law for Vance, here on behalf of the applicant, I'm filling in for Rick Brodsky since I was here. This application hopefully will be uh a bit simpler. We have a lot that is extraordinarily oversized. Almost four times the size that the zone requires. We're not looking to even subdivide it into three lots, which we would be able to by density. We're just looking to subdivide it into two lots by drawing a line down the center. Because of the size and shape of the lot, in that it's narrower but very, very deep, uh we require variances as it relates to lot width.
And they mark in the following exhibits, exhibit A one will be the application itself, exhibit A two is the minor subdivision plan. And those are the only exhibits I have from the applicant. I then have exhibit B one is in board one, will be the board planner's report, exhibit B two will be the board engineer's original report. Exhibit B three will be the board engineer's revised report, exhibit B four will be the crime prevention report, exhibit B five. Will be the traffic safety bureau report, exhibit B six will be the code enforcement report, exhibit B seven will be the fire marshal report. And exhibit B eight will be the department of public works report.
Okay, just a quick note, um Ms. Samonte has decided to, has recused herself from this uh this um case.
Because our engineer looks strangely like she does. And and thank you, and as I indicated, and also I just wanted to note that uh we're not proposing any construction at this time at all. It's just purely to subdivide it, uh so I'm gonna turn it over to Chet, have him sworn and just walk through the numbers. As it relates to the bulk standards.
Okay, sir, do you swear in testimony you're gonna give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, and you are a licensed lance surveyor, state of New Jersey.
I am.
And a licensed professional engineer.
And a licensed professional engineer.
I won't take that away from them.
It's okay.
So just if you could go through the dimensions of the lot as it exists, what the zone requires. And what the lot configurations will be as proposed.
The lot as it presently exists has a frontage of a hundred and sixty feet and a depth of. At two hundred and sixty to three hundred feet, has a total area of forty. Forty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixteen square feet. Um properties in the R four zone, which requires ten thousand square feet of lot area. Ninety feet of width and a hundred feet of depth. Um the lots have been proposed to be divided almost equally, each lot's about twenty-three thousand, five hundred square feet. Uh but each lot does require a lot width variance. Um the lot to the. The lot to the east. the lot to the east has a width of eighty-one point five feet, the lot to the west has a width of eighty point six feet.
So even though the, the lot width doesn't meet the requirement, the lot area is more than twice what the ordinance requires.
Yes.
And notwithstanding the lot width, you're showing a building footprint that fully complies, so.
Yes.
If the board grants this, when these lots are developed, it can be done without any variance relief.
That's right.
Okay, and then, um, I think it was in Jim's letter, there was a suggestion that the non-conforming driveway uh, on the property on the east be removed. Uh, in that there's some gravel that kinda goes up to the property line. And one of the things that I asked Jim before the meeting, and I'll ask the board, is, we're happy to remove it. We agree that any new home will have to have a conforming driveway, come back to this board. We would just ask that it be a condition of building permit, as opposed to subdivision, so we don't get held up in bonding and going to the county and all kinds of other things. I did run it by, uh, both Colleen and, uh, Jim before the meeting, so, short of that, um.
I'm sorry, so, so you want it to be a condition of what?
Building permit for construction of a home.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That, that variance not be granted, basically.
Right.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Then the driveway has to be five feet.
Right.
Right, totally understand, okay.
And I have one other minor comment, which I realized today that I, when I was reviewing the application. The ordinance requires that the front setback be drawn, be, be measured from the right-of-way that is recommended in the master plan for the type of road.
Who wrote the order?
I, I don't know who the guy is. He, he definitely, I gotta have a talk with him.
All right, so what is that now?
But, but the.
But what's, can you repeat it?
Yeah, the, the front setback has to be measured from the right-of-way as recommended in the master plan for the street. In this case, the recommended, uh, right-of-way width for West Park Avenue is sixty-six feet in the master plan.
Okay, so we'll move it back.
That would, the existing right-of-way is fifty feet. So if you take half of the sixteen-foot difference, the recommended right-of-way on the north side would be eight feet in from the front property line. So the front setback would have to be the thirty-foot required setback, plus the eight-foot setback.
Okay.
Which still would fully conform, it just means that thirty-foot front setback line should be thirty-eight feet.
And I have a question, Jim, and, and again, this is.
Wait, 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 hold your question, just so I fully understand this for the resolution.
Yeah.
What exactly, that they're proposing how much?
They're proposing thirty from the front property line.
And sixty-six feet is?
And it should be thirty-eight feet.
Okay.
And we're gonna propose thirty-eight.
Can I just?
Yeah.
You're gonna change it to thirty-eight?
Yeah, let me, yeah, just one thing, is that, because this is a county road.
Yeah, the county has fifteen feet.
Yeah, they, yeah, the county has a right-of-way is fifty feet, so the municipa, how does the municipality have a right-of-way width on a county road that they don't have, and I'm just, I, I don't necessarily object to the eight feet, I'm just carrying it.
It's been that way in the master plan since eighty, and when we updated the master plan, I didn't catch that.
Okay, but, I mean, you'd agree that the, because it's a county road, they're never gonna widen it wider than.
I don't think it's ever gonna be widened any wider than it is right now.
No, 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 but at, at worst, it's gonna be where we're proposing, so we are proposing to dedicate fifteen feet by way of easement to the county for road widening. The town, I don't think, would have the right to widen those additional eight feet.
No, no, but the master plan, it's, it's the way the ordinance is written, it's a technical barrier.
So, so, but you're saying you're gonna give the thirty-eight? Did I hear you say that?
Well, I'm already giving you forty-five, but if you only want thirty-eight, I.
So they're giving more than was your question?
I, I'm proposing it as.
Are you giving thirty feet?
From the easement line.
From the easement, oh, okay, so you're fine then.
So there's no variance.
Okay. Assume that's what.
Crossing out everything I just tried to write down.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, you're fine then, okay, you're giving forty-five, so you're fine.
Okay.
So, right now, the only issue is, why shouldn't say the only? What is, is, is lot width?
That's it.
Instead of being ninety, it's eighty-eight and eighty, or something like that?
It's eighty and eighty-one.
Eighty and eighty-one and eighty. So, so, because the driveway step back's gonna be dealt with, add destruction.
And the lot frontage actually conforms, because the frontage can be sixty-five percent of the lot width. So the frontage conforms.
Okay, and the other, and the other statement is that the, um, the lot itself is, uh, exceeds the average.
Well, no, not the average, it actually, each of the lots are more than double the size of the ordinance requires.
Okay, okay, is there any other thing to talk about?
Not in my opinion.
All right, do you guys have anything you wanna discuss on this? What's the, what's the, um, what, what does it look like, uh, for their neighbors? Is it, uh?
I do have a planner here.
The, most of the lots in the neighborhood are smaller than these proposed lots, and a number of them have widths that are very similar to what's proposed.
Mm-hmm.
Directly across the street, just but all the widths, all the lots are much smaller and have widths that are similar to what's being proposed. And on the same side, they're not quite as deep, and again, the widths vary, but they're pretty close to what's being proposed here.
Okay, do you, do you have any other comments you guys wanna make?
No, engineering-wise, there, I, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay, anybody have any things that they wanna ask here?
I just have the clarification, the driveway removal includes soil decompaction, right?
I'm not sure I know what that means, but yes.
I mean, it's a driveway, so it's essentially impervious, because the soil's been compacted.
It's my understanding that from the top, that the, that the Stone Drive was just gravel and it's not even there. Nothing's, this used to be a two-family home.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing's been on this property in decades, as I understand it, so, to the extent that it was compacted, it may have de-compacted by itself, but yes, it will most definitely include decompaction, and I learned something new today.
So, so for the record, Ms. Krimko actually said something humorous that both sides actually laughed at, so, history being made.
Where, where is that driveway? Oh, there's one hugging the east side of the property line, east side of the property.
It says Stone Drive, Mr. Rades.
Asphalt Drive, I suppose?
No, 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 it says.
Stone Drive running up the right side, Asphalt Drive is on the neighbor's side.
There's a stone drive, is it right there? That's a stone drive?
Got it.
And that one, that little stub is a stone drive right there.
Got it, okay, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, does anybody, um, did anybody have any, any questions or anything they'd like to ask? On the board? No? Anybody from the community have anything they'd like to say or make a comment about, or ask a question? No?
I do have a planner here, I'm sure he'd like to comment, but I'm assuming the board doesn't need to hear based on Jim's testimony.
I think we're cool, I think we're cool. So if that, so I think we're gonna close the, uh, the big comment session we have from the public, kinda close that. And, uh, anybody wanna make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
With the variances.
Variance.
Variance noted.
Variance lot.
There's actually two variances, two lots.
Right, right, okay, variances.
Schröderinger's variance, yeah. Same variance for both.
I'll second. Great. He made the motion. He seconded. It's okay. Yes.
Councilman, that one? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I think you missed, uh. Yes. Yes.
Oh, I forgot the Yankees game is on, isn't it?
No, it's not, no, that's not, we're not, we're not gonna rush. Okay, so I, I guess we're all done here.
Thank you.
Um, can I get a motion to, um, I'm all done here.
To adjourn.